Good evening, being March 28th, 2019. This is the Cushnet Planning Board. Is there a motion open to the meeting?
Motion open.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
At 7:37. I'm late tonight, sorry.
6:37.
6:37. It was a good deal.
I wasn't that late, was I?
This meeting is being audited and videotaped for Mass General Law. With that... Thanks, boss. Minutes from March 7, 2019. Is there a motion of your gentleman to talk to you?
Motion to talk.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number two, motions. Kind enough to sign Donnis' page and pass that around. Item number three is the mail. Twenty-four, Taylor Street, town. Rochester, Rochester. Nothing serious, nothing on the line. Item number four, planner update. You want to do that at the end, Henry?
Do it at the end.
You've got it. With that... Is this still a public hearing?
It is. Continuation of the public hearing.
So I have to wait till 6:45? I can't do it?
We should wait.
But it's still early, I can't believe it. After all that, we're on time. Need five minutes to come back from regular session into a public session. Back from commercial break. Is there a motion open to the public hearing from the Neesha Estates at 6:45?
Motion open to public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
With that, introduce yourself and tell us why you are here. We know why that handsome face is here.
For the record, my name is Jeff Bowman from Site Tech Engineering here, representing EPM Development, the applicant from the Neesha Estates. This project has been continued from your last public meeting. The only outstanding issue at that point was the board had voted on the waiver for the sidewalk. That was denied. So this plan does show the location of the one sidewalk that we're proposing within the development. So it will be located on the, what would be the east side, it looks like of the, as you're entering the subdivision, the east side of the road. And we'll continue up to the cul-de-sac and then terminate just prior, in accordance with the standard that was in the subdivision rules and regulations. So it kind of, which it does end just prior to the cul-de-sac. And that was, that was the only change, the only revision that was asked for at the last meeting. So you have to answer any questions that the board might have.
Gentlemen, anything, anybody from the public, for or against? With that, do we have to read all of these five?
Yeah, we just, so we're all on the same sheet. It's part of the site plan review, and we talked about this. More lane, more lane extension has to be completed prerequisite to the project. And the water main upgrade has to be completed prior to the project.
Prior to releasing lots, right?
Releasing, right. Proper recording of easements, covenants, et cetera, strictly adhered to the Cushnet subdivision regulations, and waivers granted, there are none.
Gentlemen, is there a motion? Any questions first, for or against? Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. With that, we cannot sign these tonight, or?
You cannot sign it tonight.
Because we have 21 days. So with that, is there a motion to close the public hearing on the Neesha Estates?
Motion to close.
All in favor?
Aye.
With that, that's all set. 21 days from now, we will sign these papers and do the vote.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate that.
Thank you. The roadway improvement plan, is that a separate law? How does?
Which one?
On water. Or is that, that's part of?
It's all part of.
Is all included a condition for?
Yeah, on this it says completion of more lane extension Hathaway Road to the single glazed drive.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, folks, for bearing with all the prepared...
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you, go off. Spend some real money.
Have a great trip in Vegas. I hope you're gonna buy some machinery. Are you taking Jeff with you?
No.
Jeff's not, Jeff's not a machinery guy at all. Bobcat or Batco.
Jeff's like you, he likes to play golf. Plenty of golf lessons out there. Thank you.
10 o'clock, we're doing good. I don't know if anybody is out there. One man, Walter, you out there?
Yeah.
Come on in, brother. Come in, introduce yourself. Oh, who's this guy you brought with you? How you doing?
Walter Hardy from General委的 office, and this is Scott Hardy. We have an A&R plan here.
Smile on the camera, they want to see in the camera.
We have an A&R plan. Hopefully that you guys can look out here. 184 Leonard Street, which belongs to the Harding family. They're looking to take basically a sliver off of each side of it and convey it to, one sliver to swap on one side and one piece that Andrew on the other. Leaving the lot in the middle of, you know, appropriate areas.
So you're taking away parcel one and parcel two from map 2054?
Yes.
That's it?
That's it.
Simple and sweet?
No new building lots, creative.
And there's a note there about seven and eight regarding each one to be conveyed to the bunker.
Pretty straightforward.
Sure is.
Like emotionally improved plan, that's the way.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Got the Mylar?
Yeah.
You've got the Mylar, you can put all these, I think we've got nine here and one down in two boxes.
I think there's seven in there, because the checklist said six, but she told me she needed seven.
You must have early books. Did you have an early book?
I got what they gave me from Town Clerk.
Do you want to use these to sign the Mylar? Is that what we're?
Yep. Why don't you?
Yeah, it was a fake, this is pretty fast.
Take a note out to the registry of deeds, if you'd be kind enough to call me or Donna and just tell us if we're conveyed after the minister. Let me check this. Form A, you filled out, by the Town Clerk.
Ian Walsh.
Do you want the receipt to lay, bud?
If you do, I'll make a copy of it if you have it for the receipt for...
There's a copy of the check attached to that package.
Oh, that's fine, that's good enough, that's all we need. Too easy, though, I was trying to sign all the copies.
That's good.
Attaboy.
It's got quite a curl to it. Where's the rest of the copies? We'll have to get some, this is straightforward. If we need it, can you get a couple more, Walter?
Couple more, friends, sure.
If we need it, we'll call you, let you know. You got the last one? He got it all put together. With that?
You're all set?
Thank you, gentlemen, too simple.
Gentlemen, thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.
Coming back in the town, well, I haven't seen you in a while, brother. Huh?
Just only for Scott.
That's all?
Yeah.
He's a lucky man, isn't he?
Thank you.
Take care. With that, our next one isn't till 7:15, so we'll take another five-minute break, and then we'll be back. Come in, gentlemen.
How's it going?
Good. Back from commercial break. We have a Form A on Wayne Road. If you'd be kind enough to introduce yourself, sir, to the people and us in TV land.
Matt Leoni with Schneider Associates, representing the Gendron Estates Realty Trust in their application, Form A application for a piece known as map 12 lot 8. And we are...
Do you have copies?
I do.
If you hand out two and three for us, just so we can look at them, please.
There's the Mylar.
You can hang on to the Mylar for me.
Do you want the copies of the Form A, Walt?
I do. Guys, why don't you grab one, two, three, make it easy, please. Get that one. Phil, you want this one?
So the piece is located south of the Frank Street subdivision, north of Hathaway Road. It's approximately, I think, 21 and three-quarter acres in size. The intent here is to create two conveyance parcels that are going to be conveyed to adjacent land and to maintain lot 8 as a buildable lot that's going to conform to the frontage and area requirements of the Resident State District. The original lot was lot 2 on a subdivision for Gendron Estates back in 2009, where the complete piece, as you see highlighted in yellow here, was generated on that plan. The intent here is just to create two conveyance parcels.
It is lot 2.
Excuse me?
It is lot 2.
Lot 2 was the entire piece, if you want to, refers to the original subdivision plan. Lot 2 was the original piece in its entirety.
Lot 2, I'm looking over here again, by lot 2.
Prior to it's, prior to us creating our new plan.
Are they going to plan that cul-de-sac, or is that cul-de-sac there?
That cul-de-sac is under construction at this time.
Okay. So in essence, that cul-de-sac has to be accepted? Am I correct on this one?
Yeah, to exist. That's interesting, yeah. It would be my understanding that if the lot A was to be conveyed as a buildable lot, excuse me, lot 8, it would, it would need to meet the planning board approval. For sufficient construction.
Why don't you put the cul-de-sac in, correct?
Yes.
Okay. There's only like, what, a 12-foot gravel road that goes up there now? 12-foot wide gravel?
Yeah, what's, what's all in there now is what is, is what is existing now.
You'll most likely have to come back in for a determination of adequate access. That's not going to be, that wouldn't be granted just with signing the Form A.
Well, I don't think that it changes the, the lot A, the conveyance pieces that we're creating, I don't think it changes the lot 8.
Oh, I know, but when, but when you go to the building, it's...
For lot 8, absolutely.
To request a building permit.
Absolutely, as you would, yeah.
He's going to kick it back and say, you know, you need a determination...
Yes.
...of adequate access. I just didn't want to, want you to think you were, excuse me, done when we signed it.
When we signed it.
Parcel C is just going to sit there?
The reason, the reason for parcel C is to keep some continuity with some older deeds and plans. I believe they're going to be conveyed together. It's just that we were asked to put that on the plan because of easements and deeds at a rate, and to keep some continuity with those as a reference as parcel A, C.
Actually, I don't consider it, considered a special building itself. So what would be the access to those lots in there that was?
A point road.
Oh, the other two? Yeah.
Well, they're actually going to be held in common with, with existing land.
Okay.
With that, I believe it'll be used. So they'll have access through that, through that piece.
If that goes back about a quarter of a mile, that's a big, that's a big piece of land.
So you understand you have to put the cul-de-sac in when you decide to make lot A a buildable lot?
Absolutely, as, as it was prior to this subdivision, yeah.
Absolutely. And now what they're going to do is charge you for a buildable lot on this one, when the taxes come up?
That's, that's not my...
I just want to...
They won't be charging me.
As long as you understand that one's coming up. Gentlemen?
Is there a motion to progress, Mr. Miller?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Your Mylar. Why don't you register at the registry of deeds, if you'd be kind enough to call myself and my secretary, once you get the book in the papers, so we can put it on file?
Absolutely.
You can hand it to this handsome gentleman right here. Why don't you put all those together, Phil? Ryan, you can sign these up. 28, is that? So I can... What'd you do, did David the night off?
He did, he did. He said he would, he would be missed, but he had a conflict, so he...
Yeah, he's old, and I don't want him to.
He needs a night off.
That's okay. Let's see, Form A, about stamp at Town Clerk, yes. Design a certificate, yes. Correct. Give a copy of the, yep, get the copy of the receipt, that's fantastic. 150 bucks is correct. You got, oh, nine copies here?
Of the, yeah, actually ten.
Okay, good.
Ten in a month, yeah. There was one left in Town Clerk over here.
Fantastic job. Oh, wait, the other side is...
I got it.
Done, something's wrong here.
It's only two meetings in one month.
Yeah, that's what's wrong. Huh? Nope, now we don't have to have one for two months. That's good to me. I agree. You sign it? No. Oh, wait, yeah. I'm going to try to go flat. Got a magic pen?
Yes, I do.
Better wipe. Slide it to me, I'll take care of this. There you go, brother.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, folks. You understand how to charge you for buildable lot on that?
All right, now?
Are your folks all together?
Cancel them, not really.
Interested parties.
With that, we're done with all that stuff?
Again.
Thank you, have a great night. Take that in, you want to go through some planner updates, or go through this?
Yeah, my planner update was really geared towards...
This?
The bylaws.
Okay. If you want to go ahead and start it?
Sure.
We'll discuss it. Each of you guys got a packet, correct?
Yeah. So from time to time, either myself, or Jim Merritt, or Helen, or all three of us, or more of us, will do, or make recommendations for changes to the zoning bylaws, which is Article 8. So each of you have a packet, which shows the recommended changes to the bylaws. Most of these are coming from the Logan Commissioner, and he's not here tonight, but I think often it's in response to common problems that he faces, and he's the enforcement officer. So it's kind of like, you know, we make the laws and he has to enforce them. So when problems arise, he gives feedback to myself, and I write them up, and then present them to you. The prerogative is yours to let these move forward or not. So next month, I'll be recommending that we, actually, I think we're going to have the next meeting in May, right before town meeting. The next meeting, we have a public hearing, we'll actually vote on the bylaws. What we vote on in May, we can leave everything as is, or if there's anything in here that you just definitely don't want going forward into the public hearing, we can take it out right now. That also saves advertising costs, which is always beating me up on, you know, this is going to be very expensive during the notice, because it's a lot. So... I'll just walk everybody through.
Yep.
Please, that's okay? So everybody has a copy. So this, these are the existing, this is the existing Article 8 zoning bylaws for the town. What is shown in red are recommended changes. And again, I'm not necessarily advocating for some of these, it's more, there's less in here that's coming from the building.
Can the section one be on page 37?
Well, there's actually one on page 31.
Oh, sorry.
And that is, page 31 is providing clarity, if you wanted some clarity on what frontage means. Currently, which is the last sentence, frontage along any street to which it has both legal and physical access, and it would end there, he's suggesting in red, to and from the buildable portion of the lot.
Does that mean no more common driveways, your special permit? Is that, would that mean that?
No, I think it's just a clarification that the...
Yeah, I, I, I believe it's just so that you don't have a driveway wandering over multiple lots to get back to the buildable portion.
Correct.
I understand it as, I'm just asking if that means that we can't do a special permit for, for a common driveway? Because then, the, you know, there'll be two lots that don't have quote "physical access" from the frontage to the building portion of the lot. That's all, because I'm just asking the question.
I mean, if we made that plural lots, does that fix that?
I mean, I, I think I know where Jim's headed, I just, I just, I'm asking and wondering if there has to be some additional wording so that, you know, maybe unless, unless a common driveway is, is permitted under whatever the section is that allows us to issue special permits for common driveways.
You want to discuss that with Jim? Oh, Rick is a whiz on this stuff.
Well, I'm just, I'm just asking the question, that, you know. Okay, so... Do you want to ask Jim for a clarification on that? I mean, it seems, I don't know, has anybody actually ever done special permit for a common driveway?
We have.
Okay, then, then it needs to, as long as this doesn't preclude that happening, I don't have a problem with it.
I think there's some other stuff in the common drivers.
There are shares substantially on the common drivers, but I think what you're saying is when we define frontage, if we're, are we putting ourselves in a box?
Well, if it's, if that's the definition, well, then you don't have frontage unless you have a driveway on your own lot that goes out to the street.
Right. Okay, so I can, I can add unless a common drive is permitted to the...
Ask Jim how he would interpret it, I guess, if you want to.
No, okay, so, here's the thing. We have a, similar to time constraint, because our next meeting is going to be in May, right before town meeting, so we have to mix the language. Now, we can...
Can you just say that, maybe you can just say unless a special permit for common driveway is given under whatever the applicable section is.
Right, let me get to that.
Big relief now that it's all gone.
Say it again?
Big relief now that it's all gone.
What?
The junkyard.
Oh, no, I still got 60 minutes.
One more to go.
Oh, yeah.
I heard it was June two thousand and twenty, that's right.
Sixty days.
All I can say is it's, it's taken close to ten years to get most of my father's stuff cleaned up of the mobile home park property. Good, good luck with the junk out.
What's the common driveway else?
Bug.
Okay, so, common driveways are three point... Common driveways are on page thirty nine. The, uh, three point three D thirteen.
Got you. Thirty nine? Page thirty nine.
Point three.
Oh, car.
D nine. Three point three.
Yep.
D nine.
I didn't, as usual, I did not go all the way to the bottom of the page on thirty nine, so...
Common driveway.
Losing my mind. So we'll just add on, unless, we're, I'll submit this a little bit. Unless permitted, uh, as a common drive at, uh, under three point three D nine.
Yep.
Okay.
D nine or D thirteen?
Uh, D thirteen, thirteen. Okay, so, let's see, the next, uh, change was, um, page thirty four. There's something of a typo there. Should, we shall not be subject to the setback requirements, not the yard requirements, the setback requirements.
Guys okay with that one?
Did I see that?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's pretty.
Okay, keep that one. The next one is on page thirty seven. Has to do with something, something Jim calls an upland circle.
An upland circle, huh?
You seen this?
Brian?
Oh, I have.
Okay. I'll do my best to explain. I'll do my best visually to explain what this on...
Yeah, I, I visually, I'm just trying to look at the words here.
Okay.
Upland circle, huh?
Yeah, I mean, the, 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 the goal is to try and provide a, is to not tuck the, the building and the septic system into like one corner of a, of a lot that really isn't...
Yeah, but I believe on this one, if I get it correctly, Jim wants it up front on the lot line.
So, yeah, this is the road. Can you see that? That's the road and this is the frontage.
Yeah.
And what this would say is ninety percent of the, um, create, create a diameter for this circle. That is ninety percent of the required frontage. I've shown this as just like a one hundred foot frontage.
So if you've got any uplands, uh, you got any wetlands in the front, you're not gonna be able to build on the lot?
Correct. So this is to, as, as all the good land is used up, we get into these situations where you have to cross through wetlands to get to sites. So this is like we had with a recent project, um, which I won't get into, but, um, this makes it really tight to get in, you know, you have to kind of squeeze through here. Now, this is, if this was a four hundred foot frontage, then this frontage would be really big and this circle would be relatively smaller. Uh, so if you're going to get in, but, you know, if you're a developer and you're trying to maximize the number of lots...
Well, or you're, or you're an owner and you've been paying taxes on most land as a buildable lot for the last twenty or thirty years.
Right.
You might be a little upset about this.
Right.
Well, I'm not for it, I don't know what...
No, I'm, I'm not for it either. I'm not, I'm not for anything that, that's gonna kill somebody on their retirement money that they've been banking on. You know?
Right.
Period, I, I'm...
You guys got any more questions on that one or understand?
Oh, I understand it, I agree with him.
Okay, great.
These people have been driving wetlands in this town for the last thirty or forty years.
Well, they're, you know, in their wetland regulations, which address this also, the wetland crossing.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay. So, page thirty nine, um, Jim is recommending that the retreat lot minimum width, after you get past the excess, uh, the access strip. So there's the, you know, you have a driveway and then you get to the buildable part of the property. He's saying you'd like to have that minimum width be two hundred feet minimum. Here's the, um, I, I think where the math is coming into play. If you look at the setbacks, they're all seventy five feet. So if you think about it, you have a width of a property that's...
I mean, that already...
Fifty feet?
Yeah, I understand, but that already prevents you from doing anything.
Right, it's, to some degree, it's redundant. But it also, uh, if you had a retreat lot where you get to the access strip and it opens up, this would say it has to remain sort of at a uniform width, it couldn't narrow neck down and then come back up. So I think that's the, that would be the impact.
Well, I, I...
We've been dealing with retreat lots wherever.
Yep. And it's at forty foot frontage?
Right.
Going back to, if it's a hundred and twenty...
Go back to a place that you've got enough room to put your house in and keep it seventy five feet from the property lines. I mean, I, to me, that's a simple enough way to do it, I don't really see the need here to put a secondary requirement in that to put them up to the same thing.
It's one hundred and fifty feet now.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we should leave it, but it's up to you guys.
I mean, if Jim has really had a problem, I mean, to me, it's simple, you know, you, you've got, can, is your house seventy five feet back from the property line? No, okay, doesn't meet zoning.
Right.
You're, you're out of here.
We have, we have the, um, I'm not advocating for any of these, presenting them. We have the option, if, if we're a little bit unclear and you'd like Jim to come in and, you know, fight for this a little bit harder, we can carry this into the public hearing and let him explain it a little further if we think that's necessary. But if you're of the belief right now that...
I, I'm just, to me, the, to me, the setback thing takes care of the, the issue. And if they, if they, you know, they can still go for variance if they so desire, either way.
Right.
You know?
No, it's all seventy five, front, rear side, I mean...
Yeah, yeah, if you don't have enough room to get those, to get those setbacks, well, you don't, you don't have a retreat lot.
Okay, put a no on that one.
No, okay.
So we'll do the same thing with K?
Right, yeah. Uh, number ten is, that shouldn't be highlighted and, but that's already...
Now, tell sixty five people you've had that rule all along.
Right.
That, was that a, a psychographical red arrow?
Yeah, I'm confirming that right now. What is that?
That's right, no, it can hide at sixty five feet.
Well, I mean, it says except there's allowed...
So, conditions.
You can do anything that's bigger than that, but you gotta get special permit.
So are we okay with that one?
Yeah.
Ten, I agree. It is okay.
All right, and then the next one. Okay, next one's on page forty two. Construction within one hundred and fifty feet of any principal structure served thereby. So what he's saying here is, you have, here's a road, you have a common drive. Okay, the common drive starts here, right? So he's saying in this area, right here, uh, this access should not come within one hundred and fifty feet on either side of a dwelling, principal dwelling. This principal structure, I think he could, he's referring to a dwelling.
But this is why the retreat lot was made because they had forty foot frontage going down.
So, so you've got to off to have three driveways in between the two lots rather than give a special permit? I, I don't understand that one either.
Well, you gotta be one hundred and fifty feet.
Yeah, from a common driveway.
No, from the house.
Yeah, I know, but, but I'm assuming there's gonna be, you know, some strips with a retreat lot. So you can have three driveways next to the houses, but you can't have a common driveway next to the house, that doesn't make sense.
Right.
Yeah, I want, somebody's gotta explain that one.
Okay.
Okay.
I understand it's, uh...
I mean, am I reading it wrong, Henry?
Yeah.
No common driveway shall be constructed within one hundred and fifty feet of any principal structure served thereby. I think that's, when we did retreat lots, there was, I mean, they were split in between houses, one hundred and fifty, well...
Most of them are in between houses.
Yep. But there, there's not one hundred and fifty feet.
Any principal structure served thereby. Well, if those two houses aren't served by the common driveway, then it doesn't matter the way it reads.
Right.
I don't know, seems more complicated. Seems this one seems a little more complicated than it needs to be. I, I...
Clarification?
Yeah, I, I would need to have that explained to me.
Okay, let's keep that in, let Jim explain it a little further.
So on that one...
We can, because we can carry this into the public hearing and we can take it out at that time too.
Okay. Well, we're just discussing it now. I mean, these are what, when we, I should say, when Rick started, we put all these rules and regulations together. We didn't have any rules and regulations.
No, no, I mean, it, it's, it's fine, I just, I just don't understand it, that's all. I, I don't under, you know, that's the problem actually with any of these things and words. You know, it's one paragraph, but then lots are, they're all different. You know, it's almost impossible to write a paragraph that's gonna cover all the possible combinations of, of lots and retreat strips and, you know...
It's not all the house lots are square next to each other.
Yeah, I mean, that would be wonderful, then it would be, if we were out in Arizona or something with that kind of subdivision, that would be great, but I'm happy with that.
That's right, hey, this is a question, listen, be honest, we got, it's a nice town, we pay good tax money.
Of any principal structure served thereby.
Okay, so, um...
Would you like a clarification for this?
Well, I think I can provide it right now.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, so presently, the, the standard is no common driveway shall be constructed within one hundred and fifty feet of the structure that meets the construction standards specified herein. So there is a, of one hundred and fifty feet, it's, it's sort of an oddly worded sentence.
Just don't, don't seem to understand it. Brian, you understand this one? Okay, I'm not feeling bad.
Eight feet is in the bylaw right now.
That's not...
So what we're specifying here is that it's one hundred and fifty feet from a, like a principal dwelling? Not, so you could pass closer to somebody's garage?
Garage, yeah.
Okay, so actually, this is making it a little bit more liberal.
So instead, they don't want the driveway close to the house within...
Right, right now, we're saying it's one hundred and fifty feet from any structure.
Yep.
Now, we're clarifying and saying it's one hundred feet from a principal structure.
Which is actually giving you leeway now.
Right.
We can have Jim make sure that we almost stand it that way. Yeah, we can ask Jim to come in, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
This is just... No, this is a draft, we got all night for this. Whatever you guys want. Like you say, you take it to a court of law and one lawyer says one thing and the other lawyer says another thing, right?
Tempers it one way and tempers it the other way.
I understand the interpretation on that, it's just, they're changing it from any structure to a principal structure. A principal structure is a dwelling.
I guess that's fine.
Unless you want to change the principal structure to a dwelling.
No, I mean, that gives, like you said, Henry, that gives it a little more leeway than the way it reads, so...
You guys okay with that one?
I still, I still, I, I probably wrote the first one, I still won't remember why, how I came up with the first.
We gotta put another time, we, we had two or three times.
Well, I know, I just...
Nine is just English grammar.
Yeah.
On page forty three, okay, at the top, um, okay, so, it says construction for private garage, uh, or private parking as an accessory use for not more than three cars. So what we're saying here, what Jim is saying, here is that, if you had a property, and you wanted to build just a garage, that would not be allowed. He's saying the garage has to be an accessory use to a principal structure. So...
Does that mean it has to be connected to it or...
No, it just means there should, you know, if you have a house...
It has to be a principal structure.
If you have a lot, you can't just build a garage, you have to build the principal dwelling first, or the principal building first. And then you can build a, a garage as an accessory use, that can be connected to the house or it can be separated.
Is that another permit? Did all that say, this is another permit or...
Uh, this would be saying you would be allowed use, prohibited use, is a private garage or private apartment for not more than three cars, but as an accessory use.
Keeps you from just putting a garage up, I guess, without anything else on the lot. Why you do that, I'm not quite sure, but...
Yeah, put your house up.
I, I, I mean, I guess, I guess that's fine.
You guys okay with that one?
Now, what, you got, uh, those little lots there on Moss and Avenue? On the way down the way you were. Buddy of mine owns them, he was talking to me thinking of building a garage on one of them lots. He wouldn't be able to do that then, right?
No, unless, unless it was part of...
No.
An accessory use to a principal structure.
It's a separate small lot, they, this says you can't even park, this says you can't even park your car on the lot.
Down that, oh, yeah.
Who is it?
David. He's David.
So you guys okay with that one, eight?
I gotta think about that again. So that means if you own a lot, but it's not big enough, it's not big enough for you to put a house on, you can't even park the car on it. Or park the car on it.
A little question, a little clarification on that?
No, I, that's, that's what it's gonna mean.
Yep.
You know, if you can't put a house on it, then you can't basically put anything else on it either.
If you want clarification, we can have Jim come in. Again, the rules are, once we get into public hearing, and once this has been published in the paper, we can take away, we can cut things, we can add, and we can try.
We may need some clarification with some of these things. Again, it's a guy who owns lots. I'm gonna say he's done a.
The one, his neighbor doesn't want him to put a, to park a couple of cars there, you know? So you're paying ta, I, you know, I, it, it all comes out. You're paying taxes on it. I can't put a house on it. Let me do something with it, you know, I, 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 I don't know, you know, the neighbors aren't gonna like it.
They just can buy it.
I wasn't gonna say that. And pay taxes on it.
Yeah.
So let's have Jim come in and provide some clarification.
Sure, you guys okay with that one?
Yeah.
Here's one I think that.
We'll have, we'll get a little more, yeah, clarification on that one.
Here's one that, um, I think we can probably all agree on, and that's, uh, to remove skeeto.
Yeah.
Weird to say. Special permit for skeetos?
Right.
Mosquitoes.
Okay, that's a simple one.
All right.
What's a skeeto?
Skeet.
Well, if you were, if you wanted to put a, a table up the town, down, or the old town.
Somebody was thinking, uh, bucks.
Like a gym.
So that just came out of another.
Yeah. Okay, the next one has to do again with that accessory use of a, um, private garage.
Yeah, clarification on that one, too.
Keep the clarification. Okay, that's your pleasure.
Okay, um, number forty. Yeah, I, it's, it's, it's a tough call, you know, on. You know, my, my father paid taxes as a building lot on the lot, on Watson Street for twenty or thirty years, thousands and thousands of dollars worth of taxes over the course of time. And it wasn't available. The new subject system regulations just squashed it, so.
Wow.
So it was like, I, I was close to a thousand dollars a year recently in taxes on it. We sold it off to a neighbor, but we didn't even recover the property taxes that had been paid, so, or he didn't.
Okay, page forty-five, um, is a lot width which, uh, measures up to the math of the item right above it. So the eighty feet is not really what's in play here. Jim just wanted, uh, to add within the parameters of the required lot size as clarification, which he apparently needs for enforcement.
It's already eighty feet, right?
Right, that's not the issue. It's, he just wanted within the parameters of the required lot size.
Guys okay with that one?
Okay, um, then you see, um, on page forty-five and the top of page forty-six, permits, that's gonna appear several times, so.
Yeah, I noticed that.
Yeah, so, once we kind of agree on what we want, what the disposition is, what is applied everywhere else. What this is saying is, as the zoning enforcement officer, to better, to be in a more informed place, the bylaw requires Jim to, uh, seek review and comment from various parties to help him in his enforcement efforts. We do this pretty much as a routine now, uh, when we have our department meetings on Tuesdays. But this just sort of memorializes that and mandates it upon Jim, so it's kind of, it's a burden he's created for himself. But what it does is help him be more educated on these projects so he can do a better job with enforcement. Does that make sense?
It does.
Okay.
I'll go all the way up to A, B, C, D.
E, F.
E, F.
Let me read H here.
Okay, H is something different.
That's a different one. This means you can't have any shit in there yet.
Well, yeah, you're, you're in a pallet in your backyard, that's now not allowed.
That's right.
About a refrigerator and a pot.
That's it.
Absolutely. I'm not too hip on this one.
No, I'm not either.
Guys, you have any comments on that? I mean, you can't, you can't permit it to store anything on the side of the front of your house. You can only store it in the rear half of your property.
You can't even do that, right?
Your property, yeah.
Yeah.
Isn't it, isn't it your property?
Used to be.
I mean, they got dwellings now, not dwellings, but areas you gotta play by their laws.
Yep.
Now they're doing it, now live.
Any finished products or semi-finished products?
Yeah.
No.
So I mean, if you've got, if you've got a contractor that's working on a, on an addition to your house, now he's gonna screen it from sight? You know, I, 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 I don't know.
No, I, I'm not on that one. You guys?
Nope.
Nope, well, that's it, good. Put a big no on that one. Do we need to vote on that one, or no? Just, listen, this is just now a draft.
We are editing, we are editing, editing this together as a group.
Yeah.
And what we end up with is what I'll ask you all to have a public hearing on next.
I understand.
In May.
Yep.
Um, is everybody okay with G one through, um, G one, A through F?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, but not H.
Pages are completely separate. And so, when you turn to page forty-eight.
I mean, I mean, you could take a hard line and say this even means if you've got firewood piled up somewhere.
Right.
Oh.
No, I, I'm ser, I'm being serious.
You're right.
No material or supplies.
Yep.
Nothing. Shit, my yard's never that clean. Pardon my language here.
Yours.
You know, I, I've seen.
We won't go there.
I mean, kids' toys, for crying out loud. Can't have them.
Absolutely.
Can't have them. Bring them inside. Screen them with a fence.
Be nice if everything was nice and neat, but I mean, come on, you gotta live, too.
Okay, so, um, on page forty-eight, we have the same situation.
That's basically the same thing, right?
So, with, with, with H. So I would strike H, I would strike H for that, although.
You know, and, um, you know, Jim gets a lot of calls from people.
I, I understand.
Nice guy, you know, step out in their.
Yeah, my lots meet hises, yeah.
Right.
Straighten them out. I, I, I understand, but.
That's a little true.
Yeah, I just think that that's going a little far myself. It's expensive enough to own a house and a lot.
Yeah, didn't think, David, on what you could do with it, that's a.
Now I got my neighbors, now I got my neighbor calling up about kids' toys in the front that I didn't pick up last night, no, I.
Um, page fifty-one, um.
Were we getting rid of H here on forty-eight, too?
Yes.
It'll be G on, uh, page fifty-one, fifty-two. We'll get rid of G, I presume?
Yeah.
And we'll keep F, one, A through.
Yep, that's basically the same as the last.
I'm taking your word.
Same thing, no materials, you can't move it, store it, but, yeah, that's getting paid too much tax money for that.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, fifty-three, fifty-four, again, we'll get rid of H.
Yep.
Okay. And, okay, on page fifty-seven, um, talking about site plan review, so, uh, I think the word of health really wanted to be, it was calling for this, just to, um, to affect the trigger for site plan reviews, and also to have some level of conformance with stormwater management. Sort of lowering the, he wants to lower the threshold for triggers for a site plan review, which, again, is just, you know, creates, um, a lot more work, um, when you go from.
For us, yeah, right?
Right, when you, you know, site plan review going from, um, for like, if you look at number three, all new and modified non-residential development, we're dropping it from twelve thousand to five thousand per feet. For, uh, new or modified residential, we're dropping it down to three thousand square feet. So if you have a three thousand square foot, you know, gross water area, you have a subject to site plan review.
For one parking space? I, I, I would, I would suggest that we give people a little more leeway than that.
Right.
Right. I, I, how about ten spaces?
Right, okay, yeah.
I, I thought that was a good.
This is the big city, right?
Yeah, I, I, um, that's a number that I like.
A, a site plan review, if you wanna add one parking space, that's, that's pretty.
Right.
Pretty stringent, yeah, pretty extreme, yeah.
Okay, so, um, is everybody okay with ten?
I, I mean, I mean, that seems like a reasonable number, I mean.
Right.
Well, the original ones at thirty, we're just gonna bring it to ten?
Yes. How are us, everybody, on the three thousand and five thousand question?
I, I mean, there's so little of this that happens in town anyway.
Right.
I don't think that that's totally off.
You guys okay with that?
Yeah.
So I think next, our next app is on page sixty-eight. This is all good. I mean, this is, um, page sixty-eight, okay, at one time, we all.
No more temporary, more.
We had, right.
You got that one right.
Everybody will like trimming that down, so.
Yep.
Is everybody okay with removing three point nine?
Yes.
Yep.
Very good. And that's it.
Well. Did they have a good job, Henry? Thank you.
So, um.
Guys, any more questions on?
Well, that was good, yeah, to, to vote after some questions.
So I'll talk to Jim about coming in and providing clarification.
Yeah, I mean, if he can explain it to you, you know, so that I just.
Bring him in, let's, let's, let's just some questions. You know, he's, this is, he's the one making the recommendations. He's doing it for a reason, so maybe he could express his opinion to us why he wants to do it, maybe we're not reading it right, or.
Maybe we're thinking of stuff he didn't, they go, either way.
Okay, so, uh, I'm going to, this may take a little bit of time, but I'm going to, I want this to be a note record, that, um, I'm requesting a motion to hold a public hearing on amendments to Article eight of the zoning bylaws to the following sections. I'm gonna read these in.
Okay, read them in.
Read, I'll try to do that.
Do you have to read it in? Can we just make it all the highlighted areas?
We can say all the highlighted areas, yes.
Is that okay with us?
Yeah.
Okay.
Instead of reading it into, take us another.
That you're saying, yeah. Okay.
Is there that motion?
I would make, yeah, I would make the motion.
All in favor?
Right.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Next meeting in April or May? One month off, we need time.
Do, do we have to have another meeting sooner on this before we advertise?
We just have to have a meeting before.
Has to be two weeks before a town meeting, is that?
What is town meeting?
Two weeks prior.
Town meeting.
I think it's a couple of weeks prior.
Yep.
Yeah, I think you're right, I think you're right.
So, what is the date of town meeting?
Yeah, one town meeting is May?
May thirteenth.
May thirteenth. Mike is the wizard, isn't he? That's why we pay you the big bucks, huh? So if we come in.
Torque City, I think, the last week in April.
Last, that's the one.
Twenty-six, is that right?
Twenty-ninth of, of May? No, twenty-ninth is, uh, April.
Go to April.
You're like the Mario B P W.
Twenty-two.
For the meeting.
Twenty-ninth is a Monday, thirtieth, it's gotta be two weeks before that.
Yep.
So it has to be, it's gotta be the twenty-ninth, so if we have, if the twenty-fifth is too late, cause it's not two weeks, maybe we should look into, I think you're right, Rick, on that, it's, you have to have that public hearing two weeks prior.
I'm, I'm not positive.
I think it's in there somewhere.
You know, play it safe. Okay.
So you wanna do it the twenty-fourth or the twenty-ninth?
Uh, I've got twenty-fifth is the third.
Yes, twenty-fifth is the third, yeah, on the first step.
So that should work.
April twenty-fifth, next week?
Yep.
And that gives, um, enough time to advertise this.
Yep. Can advertise it and, uh, Jim, can you come in on the twenty-fifth, what he wants, and we'll do a clarification. That's it? Gentlemen, anything else? Is there a motion?
Much too much time.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Right.
I at seven fifty-five. Thank you, folks.